... where they don't really flop and spend time. So part of it is really seeding. The other one is covering from the elements on a sweltering day in this northern Virginia climate in July, August. Need some shade versus sun pockets in the winter. For example, some people that want to bundle up and walk their dog and sit for a minute and meet a neighbor, then we need protection. And so I think understanding microclimate of the space we're designing is important. Materials are important. The other element is really safety or the perception of safety. So as long as we can deliver clean, clear streetscapes where people can know where to cross, it's good signalization. There is legibility of where to go, where are the ramps or curb ramps where people go versus cars. The other one is lighting. I can tell you, I used to live three blocks from that 7-Eleven in Alexandria and 20 years ago it was pretty derelict, I would not go there past eight o'clock. That was adopted by the redevelopment of the block. It's well lit, it's connected to Metro, it's a thriving block now in the city. So part of it is really how it's really amenitized and lit. The whole idea of interacting with cars, making sure that our crossings are well-defined. They are, again, legibility is key and signalization is key and then just really all the elements that come with that, in the details of the materials. This one I love because it's a mid-walk crossing, but it's so well-done with the lighting and really that definition of the crossing. And of course, it was designed for a low-speed street. The other ingredient that I mentioned before is the universal appeal and being inviting to people of all ages. And it doesn't take much more than, again, you know, think about some materials, think about softscape versus hardscape and then sort of the environment and the context where some of these places and spaces work. In some cases, we need to come back. You know, maybe the formula that we created a few years ago is not working for today's community, for whatever reason. Things do evolve and change. So as long as we are open-minded about that and not kind of taking things too seriously and say, you know what, the community is asking for something else or the space was used in a different way. This particular one called my attention because it doesn't take much more than a picnic table and a free lending lottery to attract those two neighbors to enjoy the beautiful vista. You don't have the ocean here, but I'm sure you have beautiful vistas in town. Same thing with a cross pass. You have two paths crossing and a bench and you have people walking the dog and you have somebody, there's a group of people interacting. The other piece that I wanted to touch on briefly was flexibility and scalability of the space. So, you know, in a large event, there's room for a larger, you know, group of people to get together and have an event versus a quiet corner for the day, a daily, you know, acquaintance or meeting of two friends or a mother and child. And if the spaces can accommodate, you know, that, you know, day in and day out or weekend versus weekday or weeknight versus, you know, day in tonight, I think that spaces tend to be more successful. Moments of wonder. Again, anytime that we can provide something for people to have a reaction to, emotional connection to, there's more than likely we all humans can want to go back to experience that emotion before. And it comes in all shapes and forms. Another thing to consider is the permanent versus pop-up. And we've heard that term many times in development as of late. So sometimes pop-ups are the catalyst for something bigger to happen. We, for example, we created a little pop-up park in Tyson's Corner before the entire wave of redevelopment started a few years ago. And this is what's underutilized parking lot shown on the left. And the owner was gracious to donate or to lend a portion of that for us to create a pop-up park where food trucks were already coming. But because there was no place to linger, people from all those office buildings will come, purchase their food from the food trucks and then go back to their cubicles. It did nothing for community. So what, by creating in a space where people feel comfortable lingering, meeting friends and having food from the food trucks, then it started people thinking a little bit more about those spaces, you know. And again, when you look at the components, it's paint on the asphalt, it's some inexpensive places to sit and it's really the arrangement of those components. And of course, you get moments like those, which I love. It's one of our coworker's son, he just loved being there. In some cases, we are called back to say, you know what, I do have the ingredients. I have canopy, I have signage, I have great benches, good materials and yet it's desolate. Like what is missing? What are we, maybe it's orientation, maybe it's the time of the day. You can see it's wet, so it probably was just rainy. But oftentimes, we go back and revisit how the spaces are performing and how they're vehicles for community interaction and, you know, just places to meet. Same thing here, in this particular example, what was considered years ago a good nook for meeting or for outdoor dining and now has become kind of a little bit of a eyesore and somehow a barrier. And so the thinking also changes over time. What is considered a connective or connector of a place here because of the ramp, you know, there's accessibility to that nook on the left, but then still nobody goes there because it's kind of hard to even get to. From one side, you get the car and then from the other side, you have a wall and a guardrail. So sometimes it's just perception of space and just rethinking. Another piece I wanted to mention is nothing is static in the world. Everything's continued to evolve. And part of it is really, once a design is done and implementation is finished and everybody enjoys the space, then the maintenance starts. And everybody gets to participate in that from, you know, private development to public entities and everybody that participates in maintenance. So our job as planners and designers is to provide material selections that perform in that particular moment in time and they have the better chances to have a long performance span, the most of it. So it doesn't have to be expensive, it just has to be the right selection, whether it's hardscape, whether it's landscape. And avoid excessive, you know, maintenance. As a landscape architect, I'm, you know, obviously my understanding of landscape palette allows me to pick plant materials that can live to their fullest without excessive pruning or hedging or things like that and accept those for what the beauty they bring to the streetscapes we design. So that's another one that assures the longevity and success of some of the spaces. And then if those are all now tied together, the design implementation and the maintenance and everything's working, then the beauty of it all is that sometimes we begin to start seeing traditions. After mother and child or grandma and grandkids starts to enjoy the same space over and over over a period of time, then traditions start to happen. And for a designer, I got to tell you, that's the part that gives me chills and just say, okay, my job is done, I can move on to the next project. And some of them are in the small intimate scale and some of them are in the grander scale. And it's all good. And I think my time is almost up. I have a few slides, just a compendium of graphics that show you sort of how we see sort of the journey from more suburban practices. And this is not only in design, but just industry and trends and how we are now addressing those today or perceiving them today or receiving them today from different industries. You can always go back and visit and read the fine print here, but you can see department stores or malls, office parks. You know, we see that the trends are changing for the betterment and for the refocus on pedestrian and livability and community rather than auto-dominant. In some meetings and some, you know, for projects here in the city, you know, the issue of heat islands is important to you all. And the canopy that we have in the city is so important. And so how are we dealing with that, that issue of redevelopment, bringing more built environments and how we, you know, compensate for heat island effect? We talked about car dominant environments, retail strips that have, okay, that's my cue. And I just wanted to let you know that at the last page, I do have resources for you to do a little deeper dive. There's a fabulous video by William White that was done in the 70s, I believe, or not 80s, that is called "The Social Life of Small Urban Spaces." And it's really an eye-opener as far as just analyzing what happens in the public space. And that has really not changed over time. I mean, he really boiled down to human nature. So a few reading materials for you if you would like. And we also have a brand-new podcast series from my firm. And so it's available in the different platforms and right now they're eight episodes airing. Some of them are urban design and some of them are other topics. So happy to invite you to just peruse through and see if there's anything of interest to you all. Thank you for your attention and I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know that I have the answer, but I'd love to try.
Thank you. Thank you. Now that was excellent. And I think urban design is something that we look at in all of our projects and I think sometimes we do better than others. And you highlighted some of the more successful projects, but there's certainly, you know, looking around the city, there have been others that maybe haven't stood the test of time. And I think you're right when you talk about trying to create a space that will have some lasting significance and not just be something that maybe is on a trend of that moment. I'll open it up to any other members of the commission that have questions or comments.
Just very quickly, I also think that was really excellent. I appreciate the images and I think anybody watching that would agree that those are wonderful spaces. What kind of pushback do you get when you go into communities? What is the opposition to this? It seems pretty universally like a good idea. And what kind of opposition do you get and how do you get past that?
Part of, believe it or not, one of the main ones, regardless of the type of redevelopment or open space or whatever, the scale of the project, the first concern that we get from the neighbors, and rightly so, is increase in traffic. And how are others going to come now to my near property, my beloved protected, you know, surroundings and how is that going to affect my life, my daily life? I love my daily life. So now you're attracting more people. So that's the first pushback that we hear. And it's understandable. And not understanding sort of the underpinnings of a design that is coming. So our job as designers is to describe step-by-step and as best we can, what is the design intent and why are we seeking and what are the mission and goals of that space being reviewed, right? And then trying to dispel some of the notions. Some of the stuff is perception, the perception that new development is going to come, so all of a sudden everything's going to go out of whack. And I think there's a, we are so specialized in our backgrounds that there's a number of different specialties and consultants that can kind of come back with studies and analysis to support the application and prove or disprove some of the misunderstandings. And I think that's one of the big one. How is everybody's life as they know it is going to be affected? And nine times out of 10, that disruption is really for better. It's just a matter of overcoming, we're all afraid of change, we don't understand what change means to each one of us. So I think that's just natural and it's a matter of taking steps to work together and describe what those may be and then dispel some notions and then sometimes the public is right and we have to revisit. We're not 100% all the time, but we do try and we listen. So I don't know if I answered the question, but that's...
Just a quick comment. I assume Yang Gao and Jane Jacobs are two of your heroes.
In many ways, yes. You know, my first professional degree is in architecture and I obtained that overseas. I'm from Mexico originally, now I'm a proud U.S. citizen. And then my grad studies were in landscape architecture because I wanted to expand sort of horizons, not abandon architecture, but really look at a larger context. There's a beautiful building designed by an architect, but that building needs to be placed somewhere. And that affects the neighborhood. And when you come from a place where I come from, where there's disregard of how people get to the place, how people park. Here, you have a fabulous system where just by sitting here, you're already, you're going to listen to applicants, they're going to say, you know, this is how we are providing redevelopment and you are being, you know, your parameters, your laws, your zoning, you know, all your requirements. I think that the end result is what you see out there. You see communities that have order and beauty and consistency and that to somebody that comes from the outside world coming in, I think that's just a fabulous thing to experience, even with the pains, that's part of the process. So yes, that's a long-winded answer to your question, but yeah, I'm very passionate and love those authors.
Mr. Chair. So I think often the planning commission is challenged with looking at things one site at a time. But a lot of this relies on creating a district, things that work well together. Can you talk a little bit about how you overcome that challenge when you're working on just one project or one site? How do you help relate it to what's going on around it?
Well, I think the first part is really understanding that community and understanding those components and who are our immediate adjacent neighbors, what are their concerns, what are their issues? Bring them to the table, have a discussion and then understanding their point of view. Sometimes we have the best intentions and turns out that, you know, it's like the one-sided conversation, you know, when you're really open to listen, then we can really understand that there's other, there's another point of view that is valid. So I think coming to the table, usually we advocate workshops or work sessions or informational sessions, even if they're not required by process. I think there's just nothing but good outcomes can come out of that because a lot of the questions can be answered. And then have an open mind. Somebody may have an idea and if it was not thought of before because it was overlooked or there was an aspect of the project that was not as evident from the very beginning, it can mature in the development of the project and eventually becomes a key feature in, you know, for the project. So I think part of it is just dialogue and really be open to listening. I mean, there's dialogue and then there's really a deep conversation, right? So to me, it's understanding context and really be informing, informing and informative at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. I'm glad to be, very glad that we organized this and I'm so very happy to be here and you have a good evening and a good session tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to action items. First action item is 807 Villa Ridge, the public hearing for the subdivision application. Before we get to that, the commission is going to enter into a brief closed session. We don't anticipate it'll take very long, but we are going to go into a closed session. I'm going to make a motion right now that we do that. I will move that the planning commission enter into a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body on a matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Specifically, the matter to be discussed is 807 Villa Ridge Road subdivision application. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're in closed session. We don't anticipate it'll take very long and we'll be back shortly. We don't anticipate it'll take very long and we'll be back shortly.
Call the meeting back to order. I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session by the Planning Commission. And can I get a roll call vote?
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Punta?
Yes.
Ms. Peats?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Okay, we are back in the open. And with that, we will continue with the agenda. Again, as previously announced, 807 Villa Ridge Road, the public hearing on the subdivision. For those of you who have not been here before, I can quickly just review our procedures. Staff will give us a presentation or a summary of the application. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to present their application, and then we will hear from the public. And each member of the public will have three minutes to speak, and we will go from there. So with that, I'll throw it over to staff.
Sure, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ruzzi for the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Akita Ruzzi with Planning. Since the staff report was posted last week, we've consulted with the city attorney. There's been a new issue of the subdivision not meeting the lot width requirement based on the city attorney's determination. With that, there's some changes to the discussion that's provided in the staff report, but as it stands, staff feels the subdivision plat that's before you is a non-pipe stem subdivision, and that's the plat that the applicant is willing to put forward tonight for action by the Planning Commission. Staff's recommendation, well, first off, staff feels it meets all the zoning requirements and the subdivision ordinance requirements with the exception of the lot width requirement, but there is language in the subdivision ordinance that states the Planning Commission could vary from the requirements of the zoning ordinance for specific reasons stated for the record. And so we think saving that tree, which the non-pipe stem plat does, in comparison with the pipe stem plat, would be a worthy discussion to have tonight. Other than that, I'll keep my presentation brief since I didn't really script myself tonight. That's really all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions beyond that.
Thank you. Do any members and commissioners have questions for staff on this? Anybody? Well, I might ask just one question, just again, for the benefit of those who are not as familiar with the nuances of the city's zoning ordinance, especially with the emergent issue that has come to light regarding the lot width. I think it's important to discuss, again, that particular issue, just again, to clarify what part of the zoning ordinance we're talking about and how it's being applied to these lots as presented on the subdivision plat.
It's, Emily, if you could scroll down to, I'm not sure what page of the staff report, but if you keep going down to the definitions, and this is not, the lot width issue is not discussed in the staff report, but the definitions are provided. And so the current city practice and the zoning administrator's position is that the lot width for the non-pipe stem plat is measured at the building's setback line, which is at the back lot when the lot meets its lot width of 75 feet. The city attorney's position is that it should be measured 30 feet from the street right-of-way, which puts it in the narrow area of the pipe stem, which means the non-pipe stem does not meet the lot width. Again, that's not discussed in the staff report, but these are some of the definitions that allows the city attorney to arrive at her conclusion as opposed to zoning administrator's current practice.
And again, just for my edification and maybe perhaps for others, again, the issue here is that we have what, again, to a layperson or really not even to most people, appears to be a pipe stem configuration. However, as has been discussed at the work session and at previous meetings, the current plat, despite how it appears, is not under the city's ordinance being treated like a pipe stem lot, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. So because it's not a pipe stem lot, it's not, it sort of cuts both ways. It's sort of not subject to the pipe stem setback rules as far as the front setback, but it also is not able to then measure lot width in the same way. It basically is a conventional lot. It's drawn unconventionally, but it's essentially a conventional lot, which has to meet, again, all the conventional setback and bulk requirements. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if it was to be a pipe stem lot, then the regulations state the front setback of the back lot would mirror the rear setback of the front lot, which would give us an additional 10-foot of setback on the back lot. And by making this a non-pipe stem lot, that would not be the case. And that's the big difference between the two plats.
Right, right. And so for that reason, right, it would require them to have to meet the lot width requirement at the typical building's setback line, which is much, much closer to the street, which in this case, at that point, the lot is 30 feet wide.
Yes.
Which, and the lot width requirement in the district is?
75 feet.
75, right. So therein lies, you know, the issue. But again, I wanted to make that clear on the record because that's a change from the discussion that we had at the work session, and it was something that was only, the commission was only made aware of very recently, and so.
It's a new issue for the staff too, and that's why it's not discussed in the staff report.
Right, right. Okay, so any other questions from members of the commission? Okay. Not for staff, that is. All right, if not, then we will.
If I should, Mr. Chair, I just want to commend the work of staff on this project. I think every subdivision that becomes for the commission, the commission is well aware is a very difficult case, that these things are obviously happening in the residential areas of the city, which I think a lot of people expect to remain permanent. I think there are also a lot of landowners that are sitting on properties that are, you know, large enough to create at least two or three or four lots. And so there is a city code that exists, it's adopted by council, and city staff does what it can to administer that consistent with what's written as well as what's been practiced. The idea of trying to come to some sort of system that's fair for everyone involved, not only the folks who own land and are expecting there to be certain value in it, but also the people who live around it and are expecting some sort of permanence and adherence to the rules as written.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Stotter. Okay, with that, I think we will hear from the applicant. I believe the applicant is here. If the applicant will come forward and just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, good evening, Scott Schreffler, Cottis Street Homes, representing Midville Development, the applicant. Thank you for hearing us again this evening. So I'm going to keep this brief as well. We're not presenting a change in our plan from the previous work session, so I don't feel like it's necessary to repeat everything that we did in December. But I just will reiterate quickly that when we came to the commission in November for the work session, we brought a plan that was crafted from the very beginning to save the beautiful oak tree using what we believe is a by right read of the city zoning code. And then at or following that meeting, we were asked by the city to put together an alternative plan, which is an actual pipe stem. We prepared that and presented that pipe stem version at the December 16th meeting. We continue to champion, however, the first version, the non-pipe stem version that we initially came to the commission with. Our hope here tonight is that you would act within what I understand is the 60-day window that is provided by the statute, and we respectfully request the approval of our plan that is before you and that has the staff recommendation of approval, or we get clarification that that will be denied so that we can therefore put it forward at the next Planning Commission meeting, the pipe stem version, for approval. Either way, we're, again, as we've stated before, we're happy, we can work with it, we desire to save this tree as we've done from the beginning, but that's all I have with that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Is there a, I know you presented a pipe stem version at our last work session, but, and that one, of course, did not preserve the white oak tree. Is there any possibility of a pipe stem version that would save that tree?
We have looked at, and from day one, we considered many factors in ultimately arriving at the version that we did, but the lot topography presents significant challenges to us in reconfiguring it such that we could save that tree and still build two homes. So we feel like we've already addressed that question in our design, and no, outside of, well, we just haven't even gone there because of the logistical issues with the topography of the lot in particular.
I have a question. I mean, I know we're going to, the lot width issue is, I think, obviously a pressing issue which we will, I think, have to come to terms with tonight one way or another. Stepping aside from that issue, I mean, I know, I believe you've been copied or received copies of, you know, some of the correspondence we've had from some of the surrounding community, some of the neighbors. I know there's been concern about, you know, a number of issues, everything from the driveway to stormwater, and I know I'm sure we'll hear from the neighbors shortly, you know, echoing and reinforcing some of those previous concerns that they've already stated, but I wonder if you have made any progress on that. I know there was some talk about, again, some, perhaps some conversations with some of the neighboring landowners there, and has there been any update on that or?
So we did have a meeting in December on site during the day. There was several neighbors that were able to attend that meeting. Several are here tonight. We had one additional evening meeting that was canceled. Just issue came up that one particular neighbor couldn't make it, so we therefore canceled. We tried once again, and so the short answer is no, we haven't had another meeting. We are happy to do that for certain. We, regardless of the communication that has or has not happened there, though, what we haven't had a chance to communicate to the neighbors is some of the changes that we've made already to the plan that does take into consideration a lot of the issues that they have brought up. So for instance, we've narrowed the driveway, we've actually meandered the driveway away from the adjacent property's retaining wall. We've already, just based on the comments, which, many of which we would address in the next stage of grading plan development, which is creating buffers, addressing just sightline issues even, landscaping considerations, and certainly stormwater management. We would get into the engineering of that once we knew what our new lots look like. But we hear loud and clear that water is a major issue, and we understand that as well. And we hope in our redevelopment of this property, we actually improve, and that is our aim, to improve the overall stormwater management control that essentially isn't there today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so no other questions from the commission? All right.
What do you then think would be the differences between the non-pipe stem, pipe stem, and the pipe stem lot that you would propose immediately, as you said? Other than the driveway configuration, are there major differences you think would be contained in that proposal?
No, I mean, and the major differences have to do with the difference in the abutting setbacks. So that the additional 10 feet, as we assessed the lot configuration, we were not able to reduce the rear building footprint, therefore we had to reduce the front lots' building footprint, which necessarily elongated the house wider, which encroached into the tree canopy of the tree that we're trying to save. So the major difference is that setback, that 10 feet, and 10 feet isn't a lot in a lot of cases, but in this case, it makes a big difference.
And the reconfiguration of the house is to maximize what you can build there?
Well, it's not necessarily to maximize. It's, we've looked at the design, you know, even in the pipe stem configuration, we're not so cold to say we just want to remove this tree. That's a hard decision. I don't want to see that day happen. So we, however, we have to look at what we're able to build, what we would be left with. We would be left with a very small envelope that wouldn't, we feel, be able, allow us to build a market rate home.
Can you define the market rate home with the square footage on the first floor?
Well, we would seek to be somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet total, so you'd be looking at a 1,500 to 1,600 square footprint on the main level, depending on the finished, what's considered finished space, because garages are on the first floor oftentimes.
So 6,000 square feet is a substantial amount of house.
That's for two houses.
I'm sorry?
That's for one house.
Is that one house or two houses?
One house.
One house.
I mean, if you look at, I mean, I'm a builder, as you all know, in the city. My average is probably 5,500 for new builds. We pride ourselves in the aesthetic of that. We're not looking at building a tall McMansion. That is not the goal here. We realize that is not desired. It's not desired in the city. It's not something that I choose to build even. We pride ourselves in hiding, if you will, that square footage in a very aesthetically pleasing footprint.
All right, are there questions from the commission? I think, thank you. I think what we'll do now is we'll have our public comment portion. Ms. Basemar, do we have speaker slips? Are we still using that protocol, or are we just?
Yeah, there's speaker slips towards the front. There's a stack, and you can hand them to me if you filled them out already, and if you haven't, go ahead and do that prior speaking.
Okay.
Listen, we're going to have to have everyone who comments on the record as part of your time.
Right.
Explain the front yard area.
Okay, if you want to.
Sure. If you just explain, there are a few.
If you want to make that comment as part of your testimony, staff will likely address it, but we're going to follow protocol and we're going to do this by the book. So do we have the speaker slips?
So when the speakers come up, I'll take their slip.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so then you're going to call the order, you called them by name? I don't have it, so.
No, they can hand them to me.
All right, so we'll, all right, well then, anyone who wishes to speak, then, I guess, now's the time. So if you could just please, again, hand a slip, and if you filled one out, either way, just give us your name and address. If you haven't filled one out, that's okay. Okay, sorry. If you haven't filled one out, it's okay. You can speak, you could fill it out later. It really just helps staff in making sure they get everyone's names spelled correctly and that type of thing, but, so don't worry about that. Again, please give your name and address for the record, and you'll, each person will have three minutes. And your address, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Three minutes. Is it on? There's a button to turn it on. Let's just leave it on for everybody.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Let me start over.
Sure.
Ronnie Doyle, 809 Villa Ridge Road. I've sent to the neighborhood, to the planning commission, and to others, a lot of correspondence on this issue, and I'm sorry maybe for overwhelming you, but I care a lot about the issue. The issues, as I've raised them, relate to mainly five things. I do care about the driveway very much because it's going to impact directly my privacy and tranquility, because the driveway will go at eye level on the first floor, it'll be directly outside the bedrooms on the second floor, all of my bedrooms, and so noise And so, noise, air, and light pollution are things that cannot be adequately addressed over the long term by a tree buffer, which will be maintained by people that actually own the homes after the owner builds them. That's number one. Number two, my retaining wall was built in 1976. I doubt it was engineered to withstand the kind of work that's gonna happen in the adjoining property. If the retaining wall falls, I mean, you just come and look at my house, it could be disastrous for us. I care about the water, you know why. I care about the trees, you know why. And I sent you a memo with five components, one of which also focused on legal compliance, which is what I want to focus on tonight. And I would like to turn over my extra two minutes to a person here who's gonna speak about those legal issues. But I also want to make one comment to pick up something that the builder said. The builder mentioned the challenges that the topography raises for doing his work. Except that, the topography of the property is completely obvious to anyone who walked around it, which I did, because I knew the prior owners. And the fact that there is a drop-off on one side, the retaining wall on the other, a stream running through it, a big tree in the front, if you're a builder and you want to build houses in accordance with the law, you should understand the code and not seek to get exemptions from the code, because the topography makes it challenging for you to comply.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
I'm not gonna go through every slide. I have a lot of documents here.
If you just give your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Matt Elkin, 809 Villa Ridge.
Okay, thank you.
This presentation has a lot of documents about what other people say about the front yard and the lot width rules. It starts off with what did city council say about the front yard averaging laws? What they said, if you read code sections not discussed in the zoning administrator memo, is that the front yard definition that stops at the setback line should not be used in contexts like another code section that the memo does not discuss, 1102D, which gives other specific rules to measure the yards. Slide two describes these different code sections, which are not discussed in the staff memo, they're not discussed in the zoning administrator memo. Essentially, these code sections together say, "Front yard stops at the front setback line in some places," but the prefatory language to that definition says, "Unless the context otherwise requires," and it says, "except where the context clearly indicates different meaning." And then, in 1102D, it says exactly how to measure the yards, and you measure to the nearest point of the building. Together, that means that the real front yards for new construction is the average of the nearest real front yards. The zoning administrator memo goes on for four pages or so, looking at 1944 and 1959 codes, but doesn't discuss the code that exists right now in the prefatory language to the definition and in 1102D. Specifically, on slide four, there's the definition section, the lead-in language to the definitions, saying, "Not once, but twice, the context may require that you don't apply these definitions." City council could have said, "These definitions apply throughout the code everywhere, no matter what." They didn't. In fact, they took the time to say, "Once," and again, "The context may require that you don't use these definitions, and these definitions are not regulatory." And then again, on slide five, section D specifically describes how to measure the yards. Skipping ahead to slide 17, this issue came before the Board of Zoning Administrators previously, where the zoning administrator asked for direction from the Board of Zoning Appeals for hope on how to apply this section. And Mr. Williamson, at the bottom, responded, "He wished to take Mr. Boyle up on his offer." And indeed, the BZI did tell him, did tell the zoning administrator what to do at that time. And they read the code sections that I just discussed and repeated, and that the memo leaves out. Finally, in slide 21, the advisory committee also says to use the real front yard. So, on slide 22, we summarize that multiple higher authorities, the Board of Zoning Appeals and documents from 2005, 2010, 2012, and 2015, all say to measure the real front yards using the language in 1102D. The Circuit Court also measured the real front yards using 1102D in 2006, and ordered the zoning administrator to do so in the future. And also, the Zoning Ordnance Advisory Committee told the zoning administrator to measure the real front yards of the building. Most importantly, the city council said it very clearly in language of the code that wasn't discussed in the staff report or in the zoning memo. Later in the slides, it talks about the lot width and the staff rewriting the lot width code also. But I'll stop there unless you'd like to allow me any more time.
I mean, I'll just sum up. I mean, I give, the previous speaker.
I was following the zero here, but now I see I have more time.
She was giving you more time. I give you, yeah, you can have another minute.
Well, so, let's do the lot width. So, what, later on in the staff report, at section 187, the staff report says, "The current zoning practice is that lot width is measured at either the building setback line or where the lot first meets its width requirement." That's what they write in the staff report. And yet, just above it, they quote the lot width definition at line 172, which says, "Lot width means the lot width measured at the front building setback line." The city council could have said, "The lot width is measured at either the building setback line or where the lot first meets the width requirement," but they didn't. And staff report can't just make up law in the staff report, which is what they appear to have done here.
Thank you. Next, next speaker?
Hi, my name is Dave McLeod. I live at 824 Villa Ridge Road. What I would like to address, I agree with the sentiments already expressed by the previous two speakers. I'm not gonna cover the lot width. I think that's been covered quite a bit. No one turned on my little timer here, so if you do that, that would actually help me. Thank you. The two issues I would like to address are about the trees and about the sidewalk. On the tree issue, there's more than just the large tree at the center of the lot. There are a number of mature trees around the periphery of the lot. And I think we don't want to forget about those, and hopefully, the developer will try to preserve those trees as well. They aren't, they don't appear to be right affected by the construction. What we've noticed in our neighborhood is that we can actually see our house from a variety of places where we never could see it before, and it's because two or three mature trees have come down in the neighborhood because of construction. So, we would like to see that not happen in this instance. We have a nice view of those trees. So, we're in favor of the trees. They also help on the drainage and the water issues, I think, are addressed there. On the sidewalk issue, I don't think the city does actually have the authority to require a sidewalk. If you look at the state code that is referenced in the memo, the code defines a subdivision as a parcel of land into, dividing it into three or more lots. And this is not being divided into three lots. There's a narrow provision where you may have two lots in the subdivision, but they say it's really solely for the purpose of recordation of any single division. So, I think it's a bureaucratic administrative thing. It doesn't apply to where you're making requiredments of the construction. So, technically, this is not a subdivision according to the state code. Secondly, even if you accept it is a subdivision, the code also then requires that there be a need for the sidewalk based on the subdivision. Clearly, they're referencing a situation where you have a number of units being put into a property, three or more at least, but even a larger, where you're gonna have, you're generating a larger population that then makes use of the sidewalk. This does not meet that requirement of need for a sidewalk in that area. Thirdly, from an aesthetic viewpoint in the neighborhood, putting a sidewalk in the middle of a street where there are no other sidewalks doesn't make any sense and really looks peculiar. And the memo even states that there are no plans for additional sidewalks in that neighborhood. So, this isn't a planning issue. This is just a, I'm actually, I don't understand why it's being required. There's no argument in the memo for its requirement, other than the state allows it, and I would argue the state does not allow it. Finally, if you do put it in, then I assume it has to be ADA compliant, which means that you're gonna have to have ramp, you know, something at the other end from the sidewalk or whatever you need to do, because that's gonna be the only sidewalk. It won't be connected to anything else. There's no other sidewalks. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Brian Gish. I live at 207.
Sir, if you could just speak into the microphone, just so everyone can hear you. Thank you.
Is that?
That's better. Thank you.
I'm Brian Gish, live at 207 Van Buren Street, which is the property directly downstream or downhill from the property that's going to be divided at 807 Villa Ridge. I did give comments. Me and my wife submitted written comments for the record, and I gave some comments early at the last meeting. So, I don't really have that much new to say. I guess, I wanna reiterate, and I think a lot of points have already been made, but they are important. We do have the stormwater issue, which everybody has talked about. We know how important it is. I just wondered, I see there is a note on the staff report referring to, I think it's page seven of the staff report, referring to some standard that they're supposed to meet, this one in 10-year increase beyond. But as I understand, and the staff report says, this commission does not impose stormwater requirements, if I understand. And I just wanted to make sure that, and I don't know, you know, what the code is of planning, I guess, the, it's where they do the grading plan, I guess, that the stormwater is determined. I just wanted to make sure that this isn't considered to be, you know, some standard, if there may be some other more strict standard that would be applied during the grading process or required by law or something, that whatever's in here would not, you know, would not really govern that, that if it was a more strict standard, the more strict standard would apply. So, the other point, I guess, I just also have a concern with the sidewalk. And the other point about it is, I guess, in addition to it, I think, being useless and odd, it's gonna be detrimental. I think we talked before. They're gonna be required to clear off some existing vegetation that's there. I assume this is gonna be non-impervious, it will be impervious concrete. So, it's actually going to make the water issue, the tree coverage issue, the, all of those issues more difficult. So, it really doesn't make sense. I mean, if it's going to be required, it seems to me it should be impervious material or something, excuse me, that is required. As the third point, just, is I just echo the point about the existing tree and plant coverage on the lot. It really does improve the local environment. Oh, my time's up, I'm sorry.
If you could just, you could just sum up.
Okay. So, I know that, I've talked to the developer. They've assured me that they do plan to try to preserve as much of the plant coverage as possible. I just wanna mention and reiterate how important that is. And I guess, that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm very sorry, I don't want to comment. I just want to make something clear administratively, which is that you guys met, I believe, in closed session to address the fact that an appeal is going on with prior zoning board determinations. And there is a position that my lawyer has taken around the validity of this entire proceeding and whether action can occur. So, I'll leave that to you guys to decide. I gave my comments in an effort to be as transparent as quickly as possible, but I do not waive any of my rights under my appeal by having appeared or spoken.
Okay. And the appeal is a separate matter, the Board of Zoning Appeals, but, correct. Okay, any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Tracy Biggs. I live at 209 North Van Buren, and I did submit comments previously. Oh, is it none? Sorry. Sorry. I just want to reiterate the comments of my neighbors who have spoken previously with, you know, and reiterate the concern about many issues, the stormwater, the sidewalk. It's my understanding from the last session that if it is required, that that could be something that was waived by the commission. Again, I think for many reasons, sidewalk doesn't make sense in our neighborhood. There are no other sidewalks. It would be, you know, odd and take away more, more green space, more trees, more of the, you know, local vegetation that we'd like, that we obviously like to keep in that neighborhood. And also, just to express again our concern about the overall density of allowing this level, these frankly, large houses to, in this plot, and to increase the overall density of that neighborhood, and to really consider whether that's wise, and whether that's a path that we want to continue to go on, is to just double houses as we go along with lots, as the ownership turns over. So, I would urge the commission to really consider whether that's appropriate for this neighborhood, given the topography of the lot and the considerable stormwater damage, stormwater issues that are already present in that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure. Come on down.
My name is Michael Trauberman. I live at 323 North Underwood Street. My main issue is stormwater. I live in, at the corner of East Columbia and North Underwood, where the city has allocated a substantial amount of money to fix the neighborhood stormwater system. And that's in a design phase right now, and I think they're trying to get some construction bids. But all the, all the water from uphill, including this lot, winds up going into the stormwater system and flowing down and flooding out my house. I don't know, maybe some of you have driven by my house. I'm the guy with the wood boards and the sandbags at the corner of East Columbia and North Underwood. I don't know if this group has anything to do with stormwater, but I want to highlight my concern about that. I've spoken to the developers, and I've heard them say, and I take them at their word, that they're gonna try to retain more water on the property after this land is subdivided. I would encourage them to do that. I know they, I believe they'd have to pay for the sidewalk. My preference would be, and I, is not to have the sidewalk. I walk around the neighborhood a lot. I love sidewalks. I have one. I have to shovel it myself when it snows, but anyway, I love them. But it really doesn't fit there. It'll certainly add to more water running off the property. And I'd almost recommend that, you know, if they're required to spend a lot of money on a sidewalk, maybe they could use the money from the sidewalk to help retain water on the property above and beyond what they're required in the city code. Do we actually have anything? Does this commission have anything to do with stormwater or not, if you mind answering that question?
We certainly deal with stormwater on just about every, every project that we see, so absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause my neighbor asked the question, and I don't believe there was an answer, so, in his comments before.
Stormwater comes into play on every project, absolutely.
Okay, well, it's something of great concern to me. I'd hate to see, have the city design a stormwater project downstream from this and then, you know, have additional water problems once they complete their, their new construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other speakers? Okay. All right, if there are no other speakers, going once, going twice, okay. I guess, I have a question for staff, again, just in hearing, you know, the concerns from the public, and these are all concerns we've heard before, and we do have all the correspondence that was provided, just so everybody knows, every email and letter that was provided, we, either previously or in, in, leading up to today, we do have and we do read. we either previously, or in, in, leading up to today, we do have and we do read. Something I heard, just to follow up on the last speaker's concern about stormwater, if staff could just again explain the grading process, I mean, this, this is the subdivision process, and the subdivision process essentially is allowing a landowner the right, the ability to create a new lot, or in some cases, multiple lots, that then can have houses presumably built on them. But, it's not the end of the regulatory process, it's not the end, by any means, of the city's review process. So, if staff could explain the grade, the lot grading process, and how that, how that works?
Yep, we've, we've heard all the comments, and we've read all the written comments. We have consulted with the city's engineering department. At grading plan day, would be required to meet chapter thirty-four, the stormwater requirements, but at subdivision, stormwater requirements would not be evaluated, it would be evaluated at grading plan. And there's also public meetings, called smart meetings, that are held during the grading permit period as well, and that's when it would be reviewed.
Right. And that's, and that's because, again, for the, for the benefit of those who aren't in the, in the development and building world, the subdivision process allows somebody to have a lot, again, it's really a line on paper, it has a lot of legal significance and financial significance, but it's a line on paper, it's not until a proposal comes in to actually build something, that stormwater can be properly assessed, as far as how much impervious cover, how much land is being disturbed. Until there's an actual discreet proposal to build, it's difficult to gauge the precise stormwater impact. But, with that said, there's state code, which informs city law on how stormwater's regulated and managed in the city, but it is, it is obviously a concern on every project, and not just meeting the minimum code, but in ways trying to make it better. I think, you know, we live in a city that was built out years before modern ideas and theories about stormwater, and so, we all deal with that, and the rain of last summer, which was luckily not an everyday event, but becoming more common, I think drives that home even more. Anyone who lives in a low spot in the city, we all, we all know that. I live in a lower spot, so I'm very sensitive to that, myself, over on Lincoln. But, anyhow, stormwater certainly is, this discussion, and whatever happens with this subdivision, it's not the end of the stormwater discussion, as far as that goes. The infilling process, while that's an administrative process with city staff, neighbors are informed about that, there are advertisements and notices that go out on that, and there is opportunity, even after the subdivision phase, to have input in that. So, I'll leave it at that, leave that there for now. As far as the sidewalk, we'll talk about that issue, that's something that we've heard from, from numerous people. And same thing for trees, also, it's something that is dealt with predominantly at the grading plan process, because again, not until you know exactly how much area of the lot is gonna be disturbed for new construction, do you know what the impact on trees might, or might not be, and the city arborist is involved in that grading process very intimately, so, as far as impact on trees, or not. So, with that, we could either, I know the, there were questions that were raised for the applicant, I don't know if, normally, I give the applicant an opportunity to respond, I don't know if the applicant has any interest in responding to any of the comments that were made, but I'll give you that opportunity if you desire. It's not required, but if you, if you'd like to, I think it's fair to give you a chance to respond to any of the, any of the comments.
Yes, thank you. Just, just real quick on the preservation of the trees, it is also our desire to preserve as many as possible. We see the asset that they are, they're, they certainly help with stormwater management control and erosion controls, and in fact, that's very, that's one of the very things that we looked at when considering different configurations of this lot, is what would that mean to the overall existing trees that are there? So, for example, the left side of the tree, where there is more topography, or more slope, we have the majority of our trees. So, with the ability to build out where the existing footprint of the current home is, we're obviously not removing trees, we're just removing the house. So, that, that is likewise a goal of ours, is certainly preservation of as many trees as possible. And that's something also that is, we, as we engineer the stormwater management controls that we do put into place, we have to take into consideration what, what practices we use that will preserve those trees. So, again, in light of that, you know, we will cross that bridge when we get there in the grading plan phase. So, you know, again, I said it, I think in December, I said it in November, we, we also care greatly, great deal about the water controls, the water management, and I feel that with this redevelopment of this lot, we have the opportunity to put controls into place that are not there today. If, if you're familiar with a lot, or if you've seen it from the street, it has somewhat of a, a very, well, not somewhat, it has a very steep pitched driveway, that actually funnels water off onto the neighbor's property, to our left, the Black's property. We intend to correct that, and we will. And so, you know, without any further redevelopment, we wouldn't have those opportunities. So, I understand everyone's concerns, we're sensitive to them, and we, our ears are opening, we're listening, and we're not, we're not, you know, we're not blind to those. So, that's pretty much all. If you have any questions, I can, happy to answer them, but...
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting, and look to my fellow commissioners. Anyone have any thoughts, comments?
Well, I think with the lot width issue, that this subdivision isn't legal under code, since the back lot doesn't meet those requirements. I know we've been told that we could vary, we could still approve it with a variation, but the variation would have to be based on a substantial injustice or hardship, and I just don't see that here. And, so just on that point alone, I think we should deny the subdivision, that allows them to come back with a subdivision that is legal.
Anyone else, any other thoughts?
I appreciate those comments, and the, the recent conversations, I think, have been very illustrative, and there is a lot that's, that's changing with this. I would, I would prefer to defer, while we have more chance to consider kind of this very live discussion, I know this is not the applicant's desire, and I understand most of Teets' or comments there, especially because I think this does give us the best chance to get the best, the best development, as it is currently proposed. But, I do think that we, we do have this problem of whether or not it's conforming right now. So, yeah, I do think denying it, and then coming back later, is probably what's in front of us now, but I wish we could, we could do more to, to get the best project.
Yeah, I'll just sort of echo the sentiments, my understanding is that, as currently presented, it's not conforming, and, you know, it's a complicated subdivision, because I, my real hope in hearing this was that we would be able to do something for the trees, that was my, my major concern as we, as we started here. We see these subdivisions frequently, and often, it makes the neighbors unhappy about what's, what's happening. I'm sensitive to the fact that these are by right options, but given that the plot as currently presented to us is, as I understand it, non-conforming, then I have some real hesitations to supporting this. My, my preference is also to defer it at this point, so we can get those issues settled, and to find out, find if there's a potential solution that can both be in conformance, but also save these trees, which I think was a huge benefit to the community, to the property. And lastly, I am a big proponent of sidewalks, have been for a long, long time, but in this instance, I do not see the need for a sidewalk, it seems, seems misplaced, and with no real option for an expansion in, in any reasonable timeframe, it's not something that I would push for, is to include sidewalks for no purpose.
I would echo my colleagues' comments, a lot of complicated issues have been proposed to us over the last couple of days. I think that presents a, kind of a dangerous situation to try to make a decision, and therefore, I think, giving us a little bit more time to absorb all of this, and see if we can't come up with the best solution, recognizing that there will be no perfect solution, but come up with the best that we can under the circumstances, makes sense to me.
For what it's worth, I mean, I think, I mean, the way I, I see it is that, and again, you know, we, this is an unusual situation, I will say, that typically, when we get to this phase, we're not debating, you know, aspects of the, you know, of the ordinance, you know, in this case, it's, this was sort of unusual from the beginning, in the sense that, again, as, as it appears to, to, to most people, it's, it's a pipe stem-like configuration, but under our city's ordinance, as adopted, it, it's not a pipe stem, and I think I mentioned that at the work session, I had some concerns with it at that time, for that reason, I will admit that I, you know, the issue regarding lot width was not something I immediately latched on to, but I think as it's been brought to our attention in recent days, I agree that as, as our code is adopted, lot width must be applied here, as it would to any conventional lot, and since, since it's not, it's not a pipe stem for, for the purposes of the ordinance, and I agree with, with Ms. Teets, that if you apply it, it doesn't, it doesn't meet it, you know, and so, I feel that, and I agree that the Planning Commission, in a subdivision application, we are sort of limited in what we can look at. Typically, a subdivision application is, it's always more limited than, than a special exception or rezoning, in the sense that it's really almost an administrative act, it's been delegated to the Planning Commission here in Falls Church, and we have some discretion. But typically, it's, if a, if a landowner can show that they can check off the boxes, and they meet the requirements in the city's code, we're essentially compelled to, to grant the subdivision, or if not, be very specific about exactly why we're not granting it, and essentially, what could be changed, so that they could gain approval, because it's supposed to be, again, meeting, meeting, meeting the code. In this case, we thought we understood the code, but, but apparently there, apparently we didn't, we didn't, the way it was, should be applied here, because it is an unusual situation. It's kind of a long-winded way to say, I agree with Ms. Teets, that I don't think we, we can approve the current proposal as it's submitted, I don't think it's approvable, I don't think the Planning Commission has the ability to grant any type of deviation, I don't wanna use the word variance, variance is something for the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I don't think we can grant any type of deviation from the zoning ordinance as part of a subdivision approval, I just don't think we can do that, even if, even if we wanted to, that's my opinion. And so, for that reason, I, I agree with my colleague Ms. Teets, that, that I don't think this is approvable, as it's currently presented to us, the current, the current plat. And so, my inclination would be to, to deny this plat, and give the applicant a chance to reconsider different options and resubmit, if he so chooses, and we'll evaluate whatever that new submission may or may not be. But, the current plat seems on its face to be unapprovable, for that, for that reason. It may be, some view may view it as a technicality, but it, it's the code, the city council adopts the code, and we have to implement it and live with it, so...
I'd just add a couple of other comments, as they occur to me here. The issue, and one of the issues on my mind is, to what degree can we vary? And certainly going from thirty feet to seventy-five feet is, is a big variance, but maybe that is something we can do, and that's something that I'd like to think about some more, and have some more discussion, to see if our, if the discretion that we have allows for that big of a change. And then, the other comment that I would make is that whatever, you know, whatever option comes back to us, I would certainly give very high preference to preserving the white oak tree, so I certainly hope we can come up with a solution that enables that, that outcome.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think we'd all like to save as many trees on the property as we want, but I guess the problem is, at subdivision, we're not involved in the trees, or preservation of the trees. It's all done at site plan, site plan is administratively done, though you're dealing with staff at that point. It's really up to what the city arborist says, and what the developers' plans look like. So, I, you know, as much as I wanna do something that saved a tree, our subdivision, you know, isn't going to indicate anything that would say that tree would be saved. It just leaves the possibility that perhaps, if the developer puts the house at a certain place, and the driveway at a certain place, that maybe the tree will be preserved, but that is a site plan issue, and we don't have any involvement in site plan.
All right. So, I've heard from, I've heard from most of us. Does anyone wanna make a motion, one way or the other, to... Well, I mean, there's ever, I guess, that's, that's true, it, I mean, I mean, we can talk, ask the developer if he's any interest in deferring, I know he mentioned earlier that he was looking for an answer on this plat, is that still your, your preference? Do you have any interest in a deferral, or you want us to decide on this plat? If you could speak into the microphone, just, we can keep it on the record?
From, from, from day one, we've tried to save the tree. We, we've done, I think we've demonstrated that with two work sessions, and then a third. So, we've, we've been at this for three months, from our perspective, and, and that's typical, I understand, but we, we were expecting at least either an approval or denial tonight, so we have a way forward. So, we, we don't certainly want a deferral tonight, because the fear is that in four weeks, when we meet again, the same plan that is before you, or whatever we present before you, is then again denied. So, we're now two more months. So, at some point, we have to decide, do we put together, do we put forward for approval, what we, what seems to be the consensus of a true pipe stem version that, that meets, you know, with, without question, the, the ordinances? So, with that, I would, you know, I think we're gonna ask for your vote tonight, approval or denial, and we will, we will then present and seriously consider what we're able to do to save that tree. I don't think it's feasible, but, you know, as was stated by Ms. Teets, it is a, it is a site plan consideration, and as we get into those design details with both our architect and the arborist, we, we will put our best foot forward to make that happen.
Okay.
And then, honestly, I just, thinking of this out loud right now, I don't know if the BZA would consider an appeal, consider this a hardship situation, where they would want to save a tree, to grant us a different setback in the rear?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's something that you can consider.
I will consider that.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, we've heard from the applicant, heard from ourselves, we've heard from the public, so it's time to, I think, to make a call here. So, I'll look for, for a motion from somebody on, on...
I'll make a motion. So, I have to do it on the fly, 'cause we only have one for it, but, let me see. Whereas, the proposed subdivision does not meet the city's subdivision and zoning ordinances, I now therefore move that the Planning Commission does not, that denies the preliminary and final plat approval of a subdivision plat dated November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, attachment two of eight oh seven Villa Ridge Road, into proposed lots ten A one and ten A two.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I would just say, for, just for discussion, I would, I would make up just a friendly amendment, that we add specifically where, what the plat is deficient in, specifically, which I believe is the lot width, and if we, I don't know if we have the specific citation in city code for lot width, but it may not be necessary, but I think we just need to reference specifically that it's deficient in lot width for the, the rear lot.
I'll take that amendment.
Okay.
So, that we can just say the proposed subdivision does not meet all applicable requirements of the city subdivision and zoning ordinance, as regard to lot width. And now therefore, I move that we deny the, grant preliminary, deny the preliminary and final plat approval of subdivision plat, blah, 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 dated November.
Okay. Eight oh seven Villa Ridge, appropriate real property number. Does a second or accept that amendment?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Well, this, this is what it comes down to, from, I mean, I think this, and I'll vote for the, for the motion, but the, it is making a bet, based on what the develop, the applicant just said, we're making a bet on this proposal versus something in the future, which one's gonna be better? Which one addresses the comments that we heard from the, from the, from the neighbors? And when the written comments, I'm not sure, which I would prefer that we had more chance to work on it, but I'll vote for the, for the motion, given it's where the applicant wants to go.
Yeah, I just, I would agree with that entirely.
Yeah, I just, I would agree with that entirely, that, that the preference is to have more time to sort, sort this out, and I'm not sure that, that our denial here addresses much of what we heard here this evening from the community. But I do believe that from a pure code standpoint, our options are virtually limited, are limited, if not completely, one, one path that we have to take in terms of it not meeting the, the lot width issue.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Bazemore, can you call the, call the roll here?
Mr. Krasner?
Aye.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
And Ms. Weiss?
All right, that motion passes. The subdivision application is denied. Thank you. All right, we'll move on there. Thank you, everybody. Well, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, 6B, which is our annual report.
Commission, before you tonight for final review and action is your annual report to the council. The report has been updated since you all last saw it. It's now been updated to reflect the annual priorities that were developed during the planning commission's advance. I'm trying to find that so I can highlight them. They are on page 20 of the annual report. Can we jump the screen to page 20? The priorities that were identified during the annual advance, or I should say, as staff recorded them during the annual advance, and of course, this is why you're being asked to review them, activities related to the West End, the city's comprehensive plan, climate change and green infrastructure. So there were a number of items that came up during the advance related to these two ideas. They were, as discussed, they tended to stand alone in order to group them and give them some cohesion. Staff put them together under a single item. So this was the idea of reviewing the city's requirements for stormwater, looking at transfer of development rights as opportunities. Also laid out in the draft work plan, although not included in this report, is looking at something like a climate action plan or a climate risk assessment. Other items, zoning and land use map updates, as was discussed tonight, looking at what are the regulations surrounding single-family development. But up first in the queue, Greenway Downs, which the commission has already looked at, cottage housing, which is scheduled for a work session tonight, and then transportation, again, looking at the idea of pedestrian connectivity and where are there missing links within the pedestrian network. These are the only changes. We had, of course, intended to include a class photo, but staff forgot to take it, but we will endeavor over the course of the year to get one for this year's report.
I have to tell you, I was at the CACT meeting, and they were envious we had any, we had photos of ourselves in our annual report, and they were like, where are our photos? And I'm like, you have to take pictures of yourselves.
You do, especially when you're not in a, in a videoed meeting room. You have to be conscious about that, certainly.
Can I just ask a question about the priorities? They're not listed in order of priority, are they?
I didn't know what to do.
Is this how we came out in terms of?
No, I think there were more dots probably for zoning and land use, and in fact, there were, there were almost zero dots for West End, but I think the question was asked before the advance, is stuff that's going to happen anyway, do we have to spend our note cards on that? The answer was no, and so that's how this landed, landed the way it did. Certainly, these could be reordered.
Or could, could we just simply note that it's not necessarily in order of?
Sure.
Priority or importance?
Absolutely. The, I should say that the draft work plan was prepared, but we didn't bring it tonight because the chair is not available for tonight's meeting, and staff thought it awkward to bring the work plan when the chair wasn't available. Any other modifications, edits, rewordings?
Looks great.
All right. We are working on a date for a presentation to the council, and I think that's either scheduled or we're working with availability on behalf of, I suppose it's the new chair?
He asked me, actually, I told him that I, per tradition, I believe it is him, but I'm happy to do it if he's unavailable. But I think I got that right. I believe I did it the first year I became chairman, even though.
You did.
Rob had run those meetings.
That's always your first thing you have to do.
Yeah, so, so it would be around Mr. Rankin's schedule.
Sure.
But he, if, understanding that it should happen in the first couple of months of the year, if he's not available, I'm happy to.
The tentative date that's scheduled with council is February 24th. It's a regular session date for them, so we can reach out to Chair Rankin and confirm if he's available or not. The planning, I'm sorry, staff is requesting a motion from the planning commission to approve the report.
Yeah, and report, and is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I guess we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, I was just talking to Mr. Wadiska about should we just jump right to the work session. I guess we can be really brief so we can close the meeting and then go to work session, on commissioners' reports, correspondents' and directors' reports, so, given that we're pushing 10 o'clock, and I feel bad that our city staff has been patiently waiting here to a late hour. So, real quickly, any planning commissioners' reports?
I can do two fast ones.
Okay.
CACT, the big thing that they're doing, we might be, want to be aware of, is they're trying to find a way to expedite the neighborhood traffic common program. So as, as it's been done now, it takes a long time to have any action. So they are looking at ways to just make it go a little bit faster, maybe have, I know Russ is laughing at that, but anyway, so that's, that's a current project going on, and so as they come up with some way that they think it's going to go.
I totally applaud their efforts. I just, I remember talking about this 12 years ago and 11 years ago and 10 years ago.
I know, but they are, they have some thoughts on how to do it, and, but, so hopefully we'll come up with that. On Rexon Park, the big thing talked about there is that, you know, we are to the point now where we're taking the house down at the Fellow's property, and then they're going to make it a temporary parking lot for the library staff, the pavement that's there and where the house was, so they're not going to affect any of the, the natural areas. And then while that's being used as a parking lot for the library, they are going to work on the master park plan. There was a late push to try to move that house. It's not actually historic. It's like off by 10 years maybe, but then someone came in, but they had several people look at it, and the house itself really has no real historic value. They had people go through it to see if they could salvage stuff out of it, historic stuff, and, and the people went through, said there's really nothing of historic value in this house. No really good woodwork, no, you know, good mantles, none of that was avail, it really just doesn't have any value for it. So I thought that was kind of sad and interesting.
Just want to highlight a meeting that's going to take place on January 31st. It's on the, the subject is autonomous shuttles, which is, sorry that Chair Rankin is not here. I know that he has an interest in that. Anyway, it's open to the public. It's going to be at nine o'clock in the morning in the Dogwood Room, and you're all welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
One more transportation-related thing. The, two of the bus routes that serve the city are slated to be eliminated by Wamata, the 3A and the 3T.
Really?
The, so the station's going to be closed next summer, so losing some of our multimodal options to get around may be tough for the, I don't know if the CACT has anything to say about this, but something to keep on our radar.
Yeah, actually, I should have mentioned that. CACT, you talked about it, if you, the orange line is going to have several of the stations remodeled, so that the East will be closed, Vienna, Dunlauran. They are going to have the West kind of open just because of the silver line, and so they're, you know, that's still being met on, like how they're going to deal with that, where the buses are going to be coming from and how they're going to do it, but that is actually going to be a big mess this, this summer.
Any other reports? Real quick for me, since sometimes I use this meeting instead of like emailing the city to complain about stuff, the pedestrian, but this is pedestrian-related. The pedestrian signal head at my favorite intersection, Lincoln and West, was hit by a truck, and it's broken, and, and it's hanging off the pole, and so we should fix it. It's bent in such a way that, you know, it's, it's, I think actually it's still getting electricity because it like lights up, but it's like mangled and pointing the wrong way, and so it's unfortunate, but maybe someone could go out and address that situation for pedestrian safety's sake.
Yes, I can bring that back to staff.
Okay, thank you. That's my only report. All right, correspondence. There was one brief item in there, I think. Oak Street Bridge memo.
Yes, the, the correspondence item was, was finalizing or carrying out the, the planning commission's action on October 20.
Oh, that's right, right.
21st, where the planning commission reviewed and made recommendation on the design of the Oak Street Bridge replacement.
Right, right, including our request to move the pole, which hopefully they'll do. Hopefully they'll find, dig deep in the pockets and find money to move that darn pole out of the sidewalk, but we'll see.
So that was transmitted to council. That is the only correspondence item aside from, of course, the correspondence received on the subdivision.
Right. Okay, and then a brief director's report?
Absolutely. Minor items in the, or rather, items in the planning director's report. First, bringing to commission for review, there's no formal action required, just providing you an update on the status of the design for the South Washington Street and South Maple Avenue intersection. The plans were attached electronically, showing the designed layout, including a new plaza that links with the rain garden at the head of Cavalier Trail Park. And then also included in the report is the expected timeline for the project moving forward with contract award in November 2020 and construction beginning in December of this year. Also included, this was a late addition to the commission's report. It was a supplemental distribution. It was the latest planning division report. These were prepared quarterly and with some great leadership from staff planner Jeff Hollern. The format for the report was updated this quarter to include a nicer-looking cover than I could have come up with, as well as a very nice introduction page where it has some photos as well as some text narrative of some of the major accomplishments over the quarter. This quarter, highlighting West End smaller area plan, community meeting, progress on the West Falls Church Ten acre project, the adoption of the scooter policy for the city, and then also recognizing long-term service to the city. Gary Fuller commemorated for, recognized for 30 years of service to the city.
Very nice. Tell Mr. Hollern, I like the snowplow pushing on the, on the header there.
We were attempting to let everyone know that there are seasons to the year, so we're expecting to find a.
And I like snow, and I, I hope and pray one day we'll have snow here again, but.
I like our snow that covers the mountain.
Yeah, well, I like it enough where it like can actually cover the ground a little bit for more than an hour, but, but.
I'll pass that along to staff as well.
Yeah, see what staff can do about that. My kids want to sled, and there's been not much sledding going on, yeah, in recent days.
Youngsters.
Yeah.
Not in the report, but related to bus service, there will be a couple sessions related to transit at next Monday's city council regular session. Northern Virginia Transportation Commission will be there to present on the proposed BRT, Bus Rapid Transit System, connecting Tysons to the Mark Center via Route 7, obviously going through the city of Falls Church. Also on that night, Wamata staff will be there to make a presentation on the bus transformation project. Looking forward to that as well. And then there will also be a council action or a requested council action on two grant applications. The first, to update signal timing throughout the city, and then the other to provide funding for a pilot service for the proposed BRT system.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Okay, so with that, we will adjourn our, our formal public portion of our meeting and go to, do I need a motion to adjourn?
No, technically, you're still.
We're still, we're just going to work session. All right, we don't need a motion. But we are going to work session, which, our first item on work session is the CIP update, and city staff is here, and thank you for your patience in, in sitting with us here till, till nearly 10, but we made it.
Do we need a motion to continue the meeting?
Is it 10 or 10:30 for the motion? Was it 10? He was tricking me. I forgot, I haven't read the bylaws. I know that was.
We'll look that up.
And that was my pet project. I thought it was 10:30. Was it 10 or 13?
It's 10:30 to go past 10:45. So we haven't made it 10:30 yet.
It's almost check the bylaws, but, you know, I fought for that bylaw amendment.
You did. It's yours. You own it. Get your initials.
We'll do whatever you say.
Well, all right. If we need one, if we need a motion, I want to follow that. Protocol, but I think, I thought it was 10:30. I think I wanted it earlier, but you guys wouldn't go for that, so. All right, go, go ahead. We're, we're.
You're getting, getting.
Yeah, after 10, we start getting punchy.
Mike?
Oh, the mic.
So Emily doesn't get to put the timer on me. So glad to be kicking off the FY 21 to 26 CIP development process. I am for the records and the master deputy city manager. I do have joining me with this evening is our grants manager, Caitlin Sosby, who has been very instrumental in putting a lot of this together, especially around the transportation projects. So I'm glad to have one of our team members joining, and we'll team any questions that you have. I have a short PowerPoint this evening that will be focused on the current projects as requested by the planning commission for this session, and then I'll close with the schedule and sort of the next steps when you see me again on February 3rd. So. So this evening, I'd like to cover the CIP snapshot, which was part of the staff report that you received in your packet for this evening's meeting. I'll touch base on the four specific, five specific projects that you requested that we talk about in terms of the current projects. Talk about the schedule, as I noted, between now and your February 18th meeting, and then we'll welcome any questions and any additional direction that you would like to have as part of the presentation for February 3rd. So this is a few things that I've pulled out of the snapshot, which is dated for January 20th. This is a document that we prepare quarterly for council. It's also annually in your CIP notebook, so you'll see it again to capture it in the full notebook for the public record. And I've pulled out a few of the completed projects as well as current projects, and glad to answer any questions that we don't cover this evening. So, and we've, following along in the annual report photo theme, in the monthly report, we did put some photos in here for you, and we celebrated the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park official opening with the completed finished sign. We do have the fire range. That's been a long time in coming with our partnership with Fairfax City, so it is now fully functional, and our police officers and sheriffs now have a health, current code compliant place to train, which is really critical for their service delivery for our community. Larry Graves Synthetic Turf had its ribbon cutting, and so that's up and running and being well-used. Fellow's property was acquired, and as Ms. Teetz reported, they're in the process for demolition and then moving into the master plan. So when you see the proposed CIP going forward there, February 3rd, you'll see money set aside and proposed for master plan implementation. Fire Station 6, which is one of those projects, has been a long time in coming to actually do facility reinvestment, as Ms. Teetz knows. Windows have been completed. Last year, Phase 1 of the HVAC has been completed, and in one week, on January 27th, Phase 2 should be completed, and both levels will then have new HVAC, and you'll see coming up in the next CIP, continued investment, the next focus will be the door replacement and the heaters over the door. And we are glad to have celebrated Phase 1 of the bike share being completed, and staff, planning staff are now starting to get the data and analyzing its utilization. This is just a reminder for the public of what the snapshot looks like. It's just a bit of an excerpt highlighting the interactive project map that we have on the website, so people can click on a project, open up schedule, dollar amount, and get the project manager contact information for follow-up. Me and this mouse are going the wrong direction. Some of the current projects, then, as I mentioned, the HVAC Phase 2, we all know and are attracting the George Mason High School project and the connection to the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. Big chimneys, as you can see by the second photo on that screen, had its groundbreaking and actually is in full start of construction mode, so if you go there now, you can see some of the ground clearing. go there now, you can see some of the ground clearing as they proceed with the first phase being stormwater and then into the playground equipment. Council has a budget amendment before them to finish out the current, the gap in funding from when the cost estimates came in. So that project on second reading on January twenty-seventh will be fully funded. There was some residual unspent money from Howard E. Herman that's moved over, park master plan money that was already appropriated, and then some funding from stormwater for the stormwater components. We are doing the East Broad Hillwood Paving Project and are in various phases of the traffic signals projects that are listed there. Most of them are in design and then proceeding to construction. Great Falls and Northwest actually just started construction and should be done in 2021, and then the rest are in design and proceeding. Neighborhood Traffic Calming, at the request of the city manager, we've stood up an internal coordinating team meeting that's meeting weekly to help with the point of expediting and moving projects along while CAT, CACT looks at more systemic opportunities. The springtime, we'll see the Annandale Gundry Project occur. It almost got done in December until we got too much rain. Had warm enough weather, but too wet, so we had to wait till spring. The federal grant that's in the CIP that will be used, we're going to target the Greenways Down area, all the roads around Marshall and Rosemary, because it's federal money, and right-of-way, we'll do it all one group project. So that's where the six-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand project will focus. And then we have for city managers' consideration, and then the next BA budget amendment, which should be in two weeks, a request for additional local funding for NTC to clear the queue. There are six projects in the queue right now, and the cost to do half of it is around four hundred thousand, and the full six is a little over a million dollars. So that'll be under consideration for council as a way to expedite. Included in that is staff resources for field inspection, so that Jeff Sykes and Zach Bradley can keep working the projects and designing community work while somebody's out in the field monitoring the projects. So that's where we are on Neighborhood Traffic Calming. So some good progress in the end of January, so next week, there'll be a community meeting for the Little Falls Great Falls project that has its concepts, and they just need, the community needs to finish approving the final concept. And then assuming we can get some money out of the budget amendment, then that project will be the next one ready to go. As you heard with stormwater this evening, that is a focus for the current CIP with the task force, and you'll see it in the future CIP with some increased focus for the stormwater. The task force has convened. It's starting its work. We're looking at six to eight projects, and I believe you have a planning commissioner that regularly attends. They're early stages of GYK, our engineering consultant, putting concept plans together, cost estimates, and working with the task force on criteria and prioritization. That timing is going to take a little longer than the CIP that I'll present to you on February third. So what we're going to present is the rough order of magnitude of the projects. So there's a dollar amount and a proposed staff phasing and a rough order of financing while we wait also for the rate study. The CIP that I present to you will not prioritize those projects, however, or the final concepts, allowing the task force to do its work. Trying to have a unified CIP, but there's a little bit of off-schedule because of the work, but I think we have a good foundation so that when the task force works done, we can proceed. Bren's Branch is a current project, and that is proceeding. Designs are done, and so it's nearing construction start. The contract has been led for the sanitary sewer for the West End project that we need, and staff continues to work on sewer rehabilitation or the lining. And of the forty-nine miles of sanitary sewer pipes that the city has, twenty-one and a half miles have been relined since we started the sewer reinvestment project significantly when we sold the water system and brought that into Public Works, about thirty percent. So the CIP going forward, you'll see additional funding for that.
The re-lining doesn't address the capacity issue. That's just preservation of the current system, correct?
Correct, in that it's not expanding the pipe. It often does help capacity because where we had turbulence or things breaking in and stopping and blocking, you lost capacity. So there is some capacity improvement and less inflow of water that's taking capacity from the actual sewage, but it does not increase the pipe. In fact, when you re-line it, you will lose a little bit.
Yeah, I remember you showing photos in the past where they re-lined, where it was cracked and tree roots were coming down in it, and that was causing problems. And then the crack meant more water was coming from above, so at least it stopped that.
Yes. So from the sense that you have less rainwater or just groundwater, you get capacity for the sewer, and then you're not blocking the lines. During your planning session, Mr. Stoddard forwarded for me the projects that you requested a little bit of an update on for the today's session, as well as providing some that you would like focused on for the next CIP. So we will certainly do that. For this evening, Mary Riley Stiles Library was one of the first ones I've listed here. That one, as we know, the design is done. The proposal for the guaranteed maximum price has submitted their proposal. It is still under negotiations, and so I cannot publicly give you a final number. It's currently scheduled to go to council on January twenty-seventh, at which time, if council takes action, it'll be time for the February third, and I'll be able to report that out. Right now, the number that we are looking at would be the September two thousand and nineteen number, where the goal was to get the project cost at ten-point-eight million, which is two-point-three million over the approved CIP and the voter referendum. So non-debt resources would have to cover the gap. The goal is to get to that level because that's what had been messaged. There are three hundred thousands, three hundred thousand dollars of voluntary concessions targeted for the library. So the current staff target is two-point-one million over budget. I will be able to be more definitive either when you all see the council public packet, if it goes on January twenty-seventh, or hopefully at your February third meeting. It remains confidential. The website link I put here so the public can get updates for the current project status. They've also done a video tour, and so you can see a tour of the design for the two levels. And hopefully, by January twenty-seventh, we will know the contract and be able to proceed. Council has approved the movers' contract with a dollar amount capped until the full contract, just so staff can plan. So things are being teed up, cleaned out, ready to move. The TJ trailers, which will be the temporary library with the parking at the fellows, as Ms. Tease reported, is complete and been renovated, so it's ready to stand up a library. And then we just have to work to move part of it there and store the rest pending contract approval. City Hall Public Space and Safety Improvements, the CIP in which we sit, is substantially complete in terms of its construction. We are still completing security components. We have to make some modifications to meet some current court code requirements for security. So we are currently looking at March to bring back the courts, the magistrate, and the clerk of the court. And then the question in terms of what's the final dollar amount needed to fund the project that was above budget is still under contract negotiations, and so it also is confidential, and I can't report out. Right now, the staff target is around one-point-three million over budget. So those two items plus NTC will be a key focus of council when the second budget amendment comes before them, looking at the change in debt issue and revenue and underspending, as has been talked about a lot in the community. West Broad Street Pedestrian Crossings, that is the four hawk signals, and making good progress on the designs. We've increasingly been able to proceed for the federal right-of-way authorization from VDOT, which is key. We are hoping to advertise March fourth, twenty-twenty-one and construction that summer. So we are in doing a lot of design and right-of-way and engineering work right now. South Washington Street Plaza and Multimodal Improvements, which is probably one of the longest-running CIPs next to the fire station. I am pleased to report to actually have some good news for this one, in that after eleven months of getting final funding and VDOT review and approval, so we can issue the RFI and hire a contractor. Last week, we just got that notification. We are approved. And so hopefully by March, the contract will be out on the street, and we'll be able to start construction of the full project, rest of the project this summer. The undergrounding is done. If you've been driving down South Washington the last couple of weeks, Dominion's out there pulling off the old poles. Now that all the utilities are undergrounded, the communication lines have followed suit and got, we've gotten them undergrounded. There is two streetlights that came down early because the Cobra Heads were on the poles, and so we've got a little bit of a dark spot that we're working with Public Works Operations to put some temporary lights until we can do the new streetlights. So that's where we are on that project. And then, as I wrap up for this evening, on the twenty-seventh, I will be working with the planning staff to transmit electronically the CIP notebook, which will be the first time I've achieved my goal, and it's Planning Commission's request, to have it to you in advance. And then on February third, I'll do the formal presentation. I'm still planning, unless you all direct differently tonight or let Mr. Stoddard know, to deliver you the full notebooks so that you can flip pages and make notes, and then when we make revisions, you can supplement it in. But you will have it electronically next Monday. And then during that presentation, I will cover the future projects for the six-year CIP plus the four-year out-years. We're preparing, as a follow-up to your all's requests, the changes from FY twenty to twenty-five in terms of what projects were consolidated, delayed, money changes. A lot of the CIP that you'll see before you is the same projects, but we've had to apply for additional grant funding because most of the cost estimates have nearly doubled. So we'll provide that update, an update to the project schedule. Also, at your request, we're going to put together, and we're, I'd say eighty percent there, a comp plan, report card, so we can report out the four new chapters against the CIP, as well as some of the policy pieces, because Mr. Stoddard and Cameron and I are working on policy pieces as well as CIP. So we'll have that for you. And then my understanding, specific, besides all the project kind of giving you a highlight and some of the funding components, we'll focus on, at your request, green infrastructure, Fellow's Property, which is mostly covered, but I'll include it for the public record, the LED streetlight conversions, and then a little more detail on the stormwater than I highlighted this evening. And with that, Kaitlin and I would be glad to answer any questions and/or any additional direction that you would like me to work on as we prepare for the February third presentation.
Okay, thank you.
I got a real simple question. Are we in an odd year or an even year? Is it based on the fiscal budget or the actual calendar year when we...
The fiscal budget we're adopting, so we're in an odd year.
Okay, and in an odd year, we are taking on new projects? I mean, I know we're not really, but in theory, we are supposed to be an odd year, this when the newer ones are introduced, and evens, we were just maintaining. Do I have that correct?
Right, so from a financial standpoint, we are trying not to take on new projects. And the CIP that you see, that I'll present, will not have a lot of new CIPs, but there is one in particular around sidewalks citywide, because that's been a council focus to kind of parallel something to NTC. So we'll present that. I am adding out-years for twenty-twenty-six and then the four-year lookout, just so that we have a planning horizon. Regardless whether it's even or odd, even though it is officially odd, you'll not see a lot of new projects.
Okay.
Okay.
And partly because of that also is Womata, so I'll touch base on some of the Womata funding pressures, which we've heard a little bit because they're cutting bus routes and they're transforming buses. But we, I'll give you a little...
Oh, I just assumed it was library and high schools, but, okay.
And adding Womata.
And now Womata.
I just have a quick question about the storm. I just want to make sure I understand how the stormwater projects fit into the CIP. So the CIP will be approved before the stormwater task force will approve its project. Is that what I heard? And so, how does those come in next year, or how does that work again?
So the way we've teed it up, good question, because it's been a little challenge to try to get a unified CIP, because I think it's helpful for you all to see all of the CIP, and it certainly is helpful for council to see the whole CIP as it might impact tax rate and sewer or stormwater utility rates for you all and the citizens. So we are putting together a CIP that will have some preliminary input from the engineers, our staff's professional input on cost estimating. So in the CIP, the funding will be appropriated and phased over six years, but it will not specify the specific projects, which is how we tend to do a lot of our CIPs, our facility reinvestments that way. Actually, the sewer re-lining the school's facility is, we'll do the pot of money, and within that, you can then prioritize the projects. In this case, it'll be the watershed management update, which had been the basis before. So theoretically, by the time council adopts the CIP, it'll all come together, but just the timing of getting the CIP before the Planning Commission, allowing the task force to do its work. We will not outline the six state-specific projects. The projects themselves have been the discussion of the task force and all the community, but the CIP will not prioritize them or say which project goes in which year until the task force. Does that help?
It does. And maybe this is something for Tim or something, but I'm just curious, when we learn about the bucket of money, you know, if we're integrating green infrastructure, in theory, the money should go further than if we're doing all gray infrastructure. So will we get a report from the stormwater task force on what they're thinking or how they're prioritizing projects? Or can we provide some criteria for how we'd like to see the funds spent? How does that, how can we make sure we're not just putting in a bunch of pipes, but we're sort of thinking about cost-effective, long-term solutions?
Well, certainly, one, at a minimum, I can report that back to our stormwater staff. I think they, the GKY who's doing the concepts is looking at the green and the hard pipes and looking what are some solutions. What they're cost estimating, cost estimating now are very broad concepts, very conservative, sort of the higher end of the dollar amount, so we don't presuppose the outcomes. It will be a public document. It will, you know, have public input before it goes to council for adoption. So certainly, I could work with Mr. Stoddard and Mr. Shields to see what the Planning Commission's role can be formally, or you all can review and submit comments, but we can look to structure something. And Mr. Stevens, I don't know if you have any comments on specific discussion points?
I think they've only just had the one meeting so far. And there was, I recall, there was some discussion on the part of a couple of members. I don't know if they called it green infrastructure, but it amounted to the same thing. So I guess they, you know, may decide to take that up eventually, so.
Yeah, and isn't, I mean, beyond the CIP, there's funds from the stormwater tax that can be used towards projects as well, correct? I mean...
Which funds are you referring to?
The stormwater tax we now pay.
Yeah. So the CIP projects are paid, it's an enterprise fund, so it's separate from the general fund. So those, stormwater utility fees, cover your CIP projects.
Oh, so they're going into the CIP. Oh, so they're going into the CIP. Okay.
It covers staff and operating for the daily maintenance, stuff clean out, all the leaves and tires. And then it also funds the CIP. So part of.
I thought when the CIP changed that maybe they couldn't be in there, but okay, that makes sense then.
Yeah. So we portion a fair amount off for the capital concurrent with the stormwater task force on the actual projects and design and input. We've contracted for a rate study because the rates need to match what I anticipate will pre, a pretty large dollar amount for projects over a 10-plus years. And so the task force will also be looking at the rate study and that'll feed into how it's funded. Concurrent, the same thing is happening for the sewer, because if you need buy more capacity and expand and reline, you need to make sure the rates, none of which have been increased in a couple of years, can cover your costs. Or you have to slow down the projects and spread them out and reprioritize. So we need that information for the task force.
Or issue debt.
Right now, this would all be issued debt because the fees do not generate enough money to do pay go, pay cash for the project. So right now, we're making sure that the fees would cover debt.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? So we will see you again.
February 3rd.
February 3rd.
Just a couple of weeks from now.
Soon enough.
And hopefully some good reading materials for you next Monday electronically. And I will plan for hard copy notebooks unless hear otherwise.
Okay. Great.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you for sticking around. Mr. Stoddard, you have exactly three minutes to discuss the cottage housing ordinance. Unless we get a motion to extend, and I don't know if that's a sure bet, so. I'm just kidding.
So, before the commission is your second work session item tonight, I'll try to wrap up my introduction before 10:30, is a request to review some considerations related to the cottage housing ordinance. Staff member Carly Aubrey is here to talk about them. I just want to introduce them a little bit. I think she's going to talk about that the reason staff is doing this is, it's actually a good thing to include in new ordinances. There's a required provision that staff come back and evaluate the ordinance after it's been in place for three years. That clock has run out. And so staff went back and looked at what happened with the cottage housing project that was constructed. How was that received, not only within the city, but well as in the region, really seen as an innovative way of providing housing? And staff also considered who else has been interested in cottage housing, and that's what's motivated the staff report and the ideas for your consideration tonight. Procedurally, the inputs that you all provide tonight are going to be folded into a staff report that's going to go to council for a work session at their upcoming meeting. So the idea is to get some feedback from the Planning Commission, get some feedback from council, and then decide on next steps. With that, first, I want to see if we can get a motion to extend.
We will get a motion to extend.
And then I'll turn it over to Carly.
I suppose.
I'll make a motion to extend beyond 10:30.
Second.
I will ask, 30-minute extension, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, there we go.
All right. Is that reasonable? I think that's fair.
I only have a 45-minute presentation, so.
All right. Don't push it.
Good evening. Carly Aubrey, the planning staff. As Mr. Stoddard mentioned, the ordinance that was adopted February 2017 had a pilot provision on it. And the important part that we're here tonight is that it was, within three years, the city manager should bring to council an analysis of the applications, approvals, and projects, and a recommendation for continuation amendment or repeal of the ordinance. So tonight is to hear an analysis of the application and approval that we have received, and then hold a discussion of the options for the ordinance. And there's three recommendation options provided. One is to continue the ordinance as is with no amendments, continue the ordinance and research some or all of the potential amendments discussed in the staff report, and/or research other text amendments, or lastly repeal the ordinance. So as a brief refresher, the cottage housing is generally defined as a group of small, single-family dwelling units clustered around a common area and developed with a coherent site plan for the entire site. 19 other ordinances from other jurisdictions and cottage housing guides were reviewed during the drafting of the ordinance. And the ordinance went to Planning Commission, City Council, and numerous boards and commissions. The purpose of the city's ordinance is to help address the changing composition of households in the city, provide more diverse housing choices, and to allow high-quality infill development. So since the adoption of the ordinance, one application was received, and that was for the railroad cottages. The special exception site plan were received and approved in 2017. And they're comprised of 10 units plus a common house. They are all under, slightly under 1,500 square feet, one and a half stories in height. There's a central pathway, an outdoor patio, 13 clustered parking spaces, and approximately seven spaces along the northern property line, landscape buffers, and it is age-restricted. There have been no additional applications formally received. There's been interest from a couple of different sites, but both of those were outside of the required 500-foot buffer from revitalization areas. So staff is looking at providing, or has provided, four code provisions that could be considered for amendment. And the goals of these are to really increase the opportunities for additional cottage housing developments. So the first one, and probably most controversial, is to possibly remove the age-restricted community. The staff report provides information, goals, and strategies from the updated demographics and housing chapters that talk about, there are other segments of the population that are in need of a diverse housing stock, such as millennials and small family households. It should be noted, though, that even if this provision remains, the code does not require covenants prohibiting minor residents. And that is an option that exempt senior family housing developments that meet state and federal law can include the cottages. The railroad cottages did include a voluntary concession and covenants prohibiting residents under the age of 18. The second one is the other special criteria exception for the location within 500 linear feet of a designated revitalization area. And the objective of that criteria was to encourage housing that is accessible to areas providing commercial services and transit, and also to provide a mechanism limiting where the cottage housing could occur. We are looking at possibly having a more standard walkability buffer, such as a quarter-mile. And then with the possible, Emily, can you pull up attachments two, three, and four? So attachment two illustrates the current 500-foot buffer versus the quarter-mile buffer to look at what other additional areas would be involved. And another consideration would possibly be, there's about a dozen properties south of Lincoln Avenue, but adjacent to the WNOD trail that might also be considered for inclusion because the WNOD really provides a great kind of immediate access to the revitalization areas. And then the third one is to maybe expand these special exception provisions to the R1B. That would pick up quite a bit of area, although as I'll get into more, with the buffers and the lot sizes, there would still be limited opportunities within the R1B. So that brings me to the fourth one, which is the site area currently requires 45,000 square feet. A consideration is to decrease that to 33,750 square feet, which is the equivalent of three R1A lots. And it would use the same formula, which would allow for approximately twice the base density. As I'll explain in a bit, parcel assemblage would still be needed in most cases, but this could provide additional opportunity. So there were two main concerns during ordinance adoption. One was not wanting cottage housing all over the city, and also the potential added density in low-density residential neighborhoods. So there is a table on page six that talks about if we were to expand either the buffer or decrease the minimum lot size area, what that would mean in terms of potential opportunity. Just looking at single parcels, if the minimum parcel size is decreased, but we keep the 500-foot buffer, there are two additional properties which could be considered, and which are both privately owned and nonhistoric. If we increase the buffer to a quarter-mile, but leave the parcel size at 45,000, there are four additional properties, but only one is privately owned and nonhistoric. So if we do both of these, there are nine additional single properties, and five are privately owned and nonhistoric. So this is just looking, everything else is basically a public park or a historic, which has its own other procedure they would have to go through. So, and this is just kind of looking at a square footage and location perspective. These parcels might have other limiting factors. So in conclusion, the parcel assemblage, parcel assemblage would still be needed in most cases, and that was the case with railroad cottages. Attachment four talked about, is a map that has single-family residential building value versus land value. And the purpose of this map is to show, basically, those parcels in red and orange are where the building value is less than land value. And so those are potentially more suitable for being consolidated and used for cottage housing. Green, the green, the light and dark green parcels are ones, obviously, where the building value is greater, so they would be less likely to have tear downs and consolidation. It is interesting, we had this map three years ago, and looking at it updated now, there are a lot more green parcels because of the activity we're seeing with tear down and rebuilds. So the opportunity for consolidation is diminishing as we speak. So, and then the other concern about added density, those standards such as unit size and height maximums, landscape buffers, that were intended to reduce the bulk en masse are not proposed for amendment. And then the analysis we did in the previous ordinance comparing single-family lots to cottage housing still holds up even if we reduce the minimum parcel size to 33,000 square feet. So timing-wise, based on input from Planning Commission tonight and City Council, if we are going to research any of these text amendments that would occur February and March, coming back to you all in mid-March, City Council, work session early April, they would refer out an ordinance in April, and then come to you guys for action in May, and final action in May, potentially. So that is my presentation. So I'll take any questions or comments.
So I guess one concern with the railroad cottages is that, one of the things that we were saying is that we were trying to get units that were a little bit less costly. And I think we all know that those units went like $750,000, $750,000 in that area. And so what I heard back from many people, they didn't see those as affordable, although they are definitely cheaper than a larger house. But, so I guess one of my things is like, I think we should keep the age-restricted community because looking at our demographics, that's a big growing group. And a lot of those people in that group want to downsize, but maybe don't want to be in an apartment or, you know. And it gives them a chance to downsize to maybe a newer house without having all the added problems they have with renting a house. But in terms of making it easier, so like doing the one quarter-mile or putting in R1B or changing the minimum, I'm not really open to it unless there's some kind of provision in there that makes sure these houses are affordable for people at a different level than what the current railroad cottages are. I mean, I'm a little bit, we make it easier to build them, but we're not really making, we're not diversifying that type of house on a pricing level. I don't know. That kind of concerns me because I think that's an important part of it, is affordability.
Throw in a couple of thoughts. I agree that keeping the age restriction focus is something that I would support. The other three amendments, I think they're certainly worthwhile studying to see what the potential impact is. As far as the affordability goes, I think that is a valid point. There's a provision in the current ordinance, as I recall, that allows for a 5% additional building coverage in exchange for either a solar facility or a green roof. And that was taken advantage of by the developer of the railroad cottages, so it does seem to be effective. It may be that you could work in some similar type of provision as a bonus or an incentive for the affordability feature.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Like you could build it within that quarter-mile, but only if it met a certain level of affordability.
Right.
You know?
I would support that, too. In which case, I would wholeheartedly suggest removing the age restriction. And I'm open to, you know, expanding the buffer and opening more opportunities for more diverse housing stock. I guess my question, though, is the juice, is the juice worth the squeeze? Because what I'm seeing is that if we reduce the minimum lot area and extend the buffer, we're only picking up five additional properties. So, I mean, compared to other strategies that we could use to diversify housing stock, how much effort do we put into a fight over cottage housing versus TDR or other ways that we could intelligently improve both density and affordability?
The other comment I would have, I don't know if we talked about it, but parking, if we were going to get rid of the age restriction, I think the parking becomes a problem. I think it's just, it's, you know, I think it's, I think there's enough, there's enough data out there that shows that, you know, even though we heard a lot from neighbors that, you know, even in age restricted, they were, you know, people were going to have multiple cars, and maybe that's true. But I think once you open it up to families, I think you're just going to, you know, inevitably have more drivers, more cars. And I think, you know, because that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the parking requirement now is, it's reduced, right, from what a standard single-family home would require? No?
No, it's actually a little bit more. Single-family homes require one off-site, cottages require 1.25.
Well, I guess the difference is, well, I don't know. Most single-family homes that are being built, detached in the city have at least two spaces. I mean, newer homes for tear downs, you know, are having at least, at least two spaces. Whereas in the cottage, I think they would squeeze that to get more density, you know? And so I just think you run the risk of having an issue. I think, how many spaces did the, did the project provide, the cottage housing? I'm trying to remember like what they actually.
13 clustered, and then they, there's the strip along the northern property line.
Right, with a few.
That can get about seven.
Okay. I mean, that would be my concern. I don't know if you guys want to look at that, part of opening it up. I mean, that, it's probably worth studying to see what it would do. And I don't know, now that they've, now that they're fully occupied and they've been there for a while, to look at how many cars they are generating, how many trips they're generating. I mean, there was so much discussion on that case about, you know, what it was going to do for traffic. I mean, it'd be interesting to see, you know, again, how much, what really, what's really been borne out there as far as, you know, actual, you know, number of vehicles that are being parked there and, are the people that live there have problems, you know, with parking and people coming to visit and workmen coming to do work. There are all these things that we heard. And so I'd like to see more attention paid to, if you were going to study it, you know, and open it up, what, you know, what if any tweaks need to be made to parking.
I support all, I think, I support all the amendments. I would like to see the age restriction taken off. I think it's, we toured around that site. I think it's a great place to raise a kid. I would love to see that be opened up more. I agree with the park, I was going to mention parking as well, but for the opposite issue.
You want no parking there.
I think that, well, it relates to affordability, and that is the toughest thing. How do you actually make market rate units affordable? And parking is enormous cost, right, for these developers. And so we've identified affordable housing as a key strategy for the city. I don't know if you've identified a lot of parking as a key strategy, probably have, but I would like to look at it from the other direction. Maybe there's ways that we can relax some of the parking with smart design that might actually reduce the overall cost of the homes.
Several jurisdictions have a sliding scale for parking based on the size of the cottage. So that might be something if we look at doing these and we want to look at parking, I'd probably recommend trying to do that. It might increase, like a 1,500-square-foot cottage, maybe we require more than we do now, but we would only require half if it was under 800 or something, so.
I think the problem then is if you lessen that one quarter-mile, from 500 to one quarter-mile, then you're pushing people further away from mass transit. to one-quarter mile, then you're pushing people further away from mass transit. So, further away from where the scooters would be and stuff like that. So I'm just saying, like, if you make that difference, then it's harder for them to depend on mass transit, because they're in, I mean, it's not that easy if you're in the middle of the neighborhood. You have to walk out of it to get mass transit. But, you know, just my feeling about it.
I just want to clarify my comment, that I actually support all four amendments without condition. So I would support it even more with, if there are strategies to make it affordable, but I am supportive of removing the age restriction.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the removing of the age restriction as well. The other amendment looks good. This seemed like a real success across the board at the railroad cottages. And we talk about affordability, that's a legitimate concern as it relates to, you know, affordable housing in general. But, you know, this, this particular developer, as a pilot program, as something that hadn't been done before, I think, put a lot of energy and resources and built a really high-quality product. My fear is that we, as we start to relax these restrictions, we get something that's not as, not as quality. And maybe that makes it more affordable, I don't know. But, I, having high restrictions on this type of community, I think, has benefited us in the, certainly in the first instance, by making it something that this developer wanted to invest in and get it right, and give that kind of, you know, as a pilot program. And just would hate to see us, open us up to a situation where we just get inferior product. I'm not sure any of these ordinance, these changes, amendments do that, but that's my, that's my real fear, honestly. This was a conscientious architect and developer in this instance.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I am concerned if we remove the age restriction, that it does mean it has a bigger impact on the specific neighborhood, the streets that it's on. Because I don't know a single-family house on my street that doesn't have more than three cars. I mean, doesn't have at least three cars because of teenagers and things like that. And so I do question, like, if we give her the age restriction, where are those cars going to park if it's not within the project? Is there room for the, you know, I don't know. I mean, our, our street is overwhelmed right now. We don't, because we have people who houses are on Broad Street. They have nowhere to park their guests, so all their guests park on our street, and it's very full sometimes. You can't, you can't park on our street. So I, you know, I just wonder about those kinds of things. I think you have more people if it's not age-restricted, so there's just, there is a bigger impact on the neighborhood. So I really think that if we're going to do that, we definitely need some kind of affordability, something that makes it worth it to have that impact on the neighborhood. Because if we don't, and they go in there and, and they're billed a million-dollar house, it's just, I mean, there are a lot of people who don't care if they have a yard or not. Then we've got no affordability, and we have a big impact on the neighborhood. And I just think that there should be some value to the project, to the neighborhood. And I think affordability is the number-one thing that we need for everything. And I'm also, I have to say, I was a little bit concerned, now looking at the chart again, that we talk about historic properties. So I am concerned if we expand this, and suddenly we have historic properties that are now worth it to take them apart and put these things on it. And, you know, anyway, that's just, that's one of my concerns, is how historic properties are, would, would the setting would happen of those historic properties, what would happen to them? And also, are we aware, some of these, I know there are historic properties that I see they have, actually have easements that don't allow them to be broken up, so.
The reason I highlighted the historic properties is because it would be very difficult for cottage housing to happen. There's provision in the code that they would have to demo the historic house, and they would have to go through that whole procedure.
Right.
For code to do that. So the reality of that happening is very slim.
So there's even less unit, less property?
Yes.
I just think to make it, I mean, to make it salable to the, you know, to the public, I think you're going to have to, right, show that you've paid attention to, right, you know, the parking, the affordability issues, because otherwise, right, I think you'll, and we saw the opposition we faced on the, on the one project we had, which arguably was cited pretty well in some way. I know despite the arguments about how narrow the street was and whatnot, I mean, it was kind of like, at the end of, it was kind of, you know, relatively isolated. You know, if we have something that's really more enmeshed in the neighborhood, and, you know, we get rid of, you know, and it's going to be families, I mean, I just can already foresee, you know, the strong opposition you might get from people who are concerned about, right, being overwhelmed by additional cars and, and, you know, having the density there. I mean, we all, you know, we know, I mean, there's the ideal that we'd like to see, but we also, I think, if you want to expand it out, I think you have to be realistic in what, you know, people have an appetite for in the city, you know, to, you know, as far as change, you know? I think it has to be done incrementally. And it kind of was, in the sense that it was a pilot project. And even that site, we saw what we dealt with, you know, as far as neighborhood opposition. So anyhow, just, I know, you know, speaking to the choir here, you guys understand how it works, but I think we need to be careful about not wholesale, you know, opening it up, because then we might, it might not even get through, you know, council that way.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to add, you know, as someone who lives in an apartment, I'm not interested in owning a single-family home. I would be interested in, it looks like a wonderful place to raise children. I don't want a yard. I mean, I just don't want these things. And I think the, my options are limited with those kind of wishes. And that my, what I think this offers, if you lower the, or if you remove the age restriction, is another housing option for people like myself who don't need to be in an apartment building, but don't want all those other issues. I don't want, I just don't want them. I have this one car, I'm able to raise a family with one car, and, and I don't want a yard, and, and I like the community and, you know, the neighbors close by and that kind of feeling. But, that housing stock is sorely missing in Falls Church, and I really liked that it was added. And right now, I wouldn't be able to access it if I wanted to because of the age restriction. That's sort of where I fall on that.
You know, I also wonder if, while we're looking at this, should we be looking at the restrictions we have on townhouses? Because we haven't had new townhouse development in the city in a long, long time. And a lot of people, that is the option they go to, with they don't want to deal with yards and things like that, is the townhouses. And we, we pretty much, the current code we have is not allowing for townhouses. So I think that's something we should think about as well.
Just one thing to point out to the commission, it's still included in the code that all cottage housing goes through the special exception process. So it's certainly not a by-right option.
Right.
And of course, every application would be reviewed publicly as well as by the council.
And I think the question is, do we like what we saw? Would we like to have it elsewhere? Here's four options, you know, we don't have to consider, adopt all of them, maybe one's better than the other or whatnot, so just kind of, but these are means to make it potentially more.
Yeah, no, I think in general, we like, we do like it. I mean, that's like, I think in general, we think it is good, and it'd be great if we could expand it, you know, in places that make sense and site, you know, site by site. But, yeah, so I think in general, I think the experience has been good. I think the community at large has, you know, I mean, has accepted, I don't know about some of the specific neighbors there, but the community at large is, I think, has embraced it. Certainly, they were popular, and they sold quickly, so there clearly was a demand for it. So I think if there were other sites in the city that.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, I think the project turned out well. I think the only thing that was really missing was affordability and that, because that was talked about a lot.
Yeah.
That these would be more affordable for downsides, and I think they turned out really not to be.
I would like to see better kind of outdoor amenity space, but that was somewhat, you know, a situation of the weird geometry of that property and the triangle shape of it, and it was tight, but.
To the questions about affordability and housing options, and the idea of sort of where's the best bang for the buck in terms of spending time, I think a lot of this is incremental changes, that you've got a community that, for the most part, developed in a, in a sort of a single-family housing development mindset from the 1950s on. Mixed use came to the city in the early 2000s, and so you've seen quite a number of those projects now, eight projects online, more underway. With the adoption of the housing chapter, that was a little bit of a push to staff to go out and start exploring, what else could you do? So cottage housing was certainly already on the books by the time housing was adopted, but now the housing staff has secured a grant from VHDA, Virginia Housing Development Authority, to look at what's available for accessory dwelling units, what would be required from a public side to preserve the fields or other projects throughout the city. And so this is another option that could be looked at, is sort of expanded cottage housing. There are other things that could be looked at, whether it's adjusting the accessory dwelling units on the books, looking at how duplexes are limited, looking at other forms of housing. And so I think these are, certainly Greenway Downs is an example of that, looking at a way to promote people to add-on instead of tear down. And I think when it's on the council, the planning commission's work plan to look at other options for single-family development, of course, this is the vast land area of the city is, by percentage, is in single-family development. And so I think all these things are certainly within the planning commission's purview to look at and explore.
All right. Ten fifty-seven. Good timing, Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you. I found a period somewhere.
All right. And Ms. Aubrey, thank you. So, all right, I think that's all we got. Nothing else on the agenda? We are adjourned.